Just this one. Seven minutes, what's the leader flow?
It's so bad. Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight? Uh, what's your F I O two?
Thirty-five, thirty-five, yeah.
Thirty-five up to sixty, some manufacturers go a hundred and sixty. I don't care what E G S is at.
What?
Up to sixty, thirty-five, thirty-five to sixty percent of your, um, F I O two range. Right, typically the thought process is the higher your flow, the higher the F I O two. But because this is a low-flow device, if your patient is not breathing stable, you really don't know what they're getting. You really, they're getting anywhere between thirty-five and sixty percent. Okay? Alright, why must you run this at a minimum of five?
So they don't re-reduce their CO two?
To, so they won't re-reduce their CO two, um, so prevent CO two buildup. Um, also another way to say it is to minimize dead space. Yeah, I have enough oxygen in here in order to minimize this dead space, right? This is dead space. It's not participating like gases do, right? So if you don't have enough oxygen in here, filling up this dead space, I'm going to re-reduce my CO two. You need enough oxygen to force out the CO two. Got it? That's how the super mask works. Now, so if you go into the room and you see that your patient is on a super mask at two liters per minute, and they're lethargic and sleepy and non-respiratory, what happens?
They're breathing, they're still breathing.
Oh yeah, increase the layer flow, but what happens to your patient? What's wrong with the patient?
Not breathing, they're breathing.
You're hypercapable. You're not supercapable for that. Is this an atypical dead space or a common dead space?
The common is atypical.
The common, the common. Alright, so humidity, one of the, uh, things with humidity is to, um, add moisture to a dry gas. Because oxygen is very dry. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that one. This one, what's this one?
I'll return that.
Yeah, it's all the same color. Although we have some that actually come in green and white. Um, it's very noticeable. We find the, what principle does it work on?
In terms of.
If it's a new thing.
Every time.
What's the word? The move is. Sighing and complaining, so they can't get to get, right? Just look at it. That one forty percent, okay, forty percent. Okay, right? Just look at the colors. Forty percent, forty percent. Most manufacturers will go up to fifty or sixty. Some, um, a lot, a lot sixty, something like that. Fifty percent is, uh, usually the highest value is three.
This is what, in regards to, if you set the containment percentage, thirty-five, fifty percent. With the flow.
Well, you have to, you always need to set the flow at what the manufacturer suggests. And this manufacturer says, uh, forty percent for this company, this is helping, says, run it at fifteen liters.
True.
Other, other manufacturers will run it differently. So you can always calculate, you can always calculate yourself.
Yeah, because without, through rotation, you know, have one guy setting at fifteen, another guy setting at eight, another guy setting at six. No, I don't get it. Yeah. The, the. Oh, oh, four meters, yeah.
Four.
Yeah. I don't tell you what, what the. Okay. Okay, from the five meter. Mm-hmm, okay. No, no, on that. You said, yeah, five, two, on there. And then you had to set.
Well, it's on fifty percent, so what's your leader flow?
Fifteen.
So we set your flow rate at fifteen.
Oh, okay.
They all have different flow rates out there. They all tell you the leader flow. That's a necessary, okay, that's a necessary system. Now, what's this part?
I could add yours off. Back up.
This is, uh, so what's this, what's this being called?
Back up, yeah. I'm trying to figure it. That's the entanglement protector.
I like that. Called the protector stuff. And it does protect your entanglement post. That's exactly what it's supposed to be for.
You're on.
So if your patient is on the Venturi, and they pull the covers up because they're cold, right? It protects from the Venturi force to be completely included. If we pulled off these ports, they're now getting what F I O two? Right? Remember, you're always connected to a hundred percent source gas. And that's what these ports are for, because they're entraining room air. So the more room air I'm entering, the less mod F I O two is going to be. But if I pulled your ports with covers, well, I'm increasing F I O two. You don't want that to happen. That's all the purpose of the entanglement, so I can go through science F I O two.
I'm not just taking this stuff.
Now, back to you. This is for cool air. You can ask the nurse. It's in the ones that the gas is too dry, you're noticing, you're using that cool air. So, take doctor one, forty percent. So set this to your oxygen, right, at fifteen liters, and run this on medical air. So do this, that has to be the standard. Can you decide the one? You can humidity. Now, this is how it used to be. But, um, what's cool about cool aerosol is it has what? What does this have that this has? They both share one thing in common. It is. Okay? So, you could totally use that. Aerosol now, huh? You could test. Who's cool aerosol anything for? Well, for upper airway as you know, right? Post-saturation, pre-apple titers, slums, or thick lumps, right? So, they would benefit from cool aerosol. But what if I have an asthmatic patient who did bronchoplasms, that means a good charge F I O two? Um, oh, go back to your big theory. Can't do cool aerosol because, well, this is irritating. You're going to cause them to go into bronchoplasms. And why do you have bronchoplasms? Makes sense? So this depends on what you're trying to accomplish. But if I have a patient who is already on a Venturi mask, but it's a plane, and it's been a little dry, and he's already done breathing, with cool aerosol. Makes sense? Does that sound like? Do you think so? Is it high flow or low flow?
High, high, high.
What makes it high flow?
Because. No, you give it to side. On a. Boy, you're. Cause it's above.
Cause it's all in the. It meets or sees. Oh, I didn't hear you try that. It meets their needs. It meets their needs.
By meets their needs, it's really like, like. These are two.
If you are, if you're sitting there, um. Breathing sound. You have me on a hundred percent. You're not going to be sad. So you have to do what in order to ensure that I get that if that's how I'm going to breathe? If you can't change my breathing, what do you need to do to a device in order to make sure that I'm going to get a hundred percent?
First of all, give the right, the right advisor.
Let's say I'm on, let's say I'm on a non-breather at a hundred percent, and I'm still going. How are you going to make sure that I get where I need? I need to kind of picture in your head. If you have a fan on low speeds. Feels good, right?
Not really.
Well, yeah. If a hundred degrees outside, and you have a fan on low speeds, it might really be a little, right? But if you turn it up to a high speed, feels a whole lot better, right? Same concept.
So it has to be able to, if you're breathing shallow, you say, be able to go higher.
You have to be able to meet their respiratory demand. There is actually a way to calculate respiratory demand. It's in the man, you really want to know that. Um, I can't, I just, I don't have my book with me, and I can't, I can't feel it off the top of my head. They will actually calculate total flow, but, um. Yeah, you need to know this calculator. Um, I'll give you another example. Patient is on super mask at eight liters. So, let's say, um, patient's, uh, respiratory rate isn't, is like maybe seventy. It's low on blood gas, and it seems to be a little hypoxic. Well, before you just automatically switch to another, um, uh, device, you could actually calculate it out and see if the simple mask is meeting their respiratory demand. At that point, it's probably not, because your respiratory rate is too high. So if you were to turn up the flow to about ten as well, it would, they would probably start oxygenating everyone a bit better. And they're still only getting about sixty percent anyway. You know, anywhere between thirty-five and sixty, you still don't have to really know. But you always want to, uh, make sure you're even meeting their respiratory demand. I believe the number is sixty, but I'll quote the number, I'll have to look it up, I'm probably not sure. Um, so that's kind of a big case, there's a high flow and a low flow. Alright, there's only questions on O C D.
C O P D patients, they need to provide oxygen.
Nope, C O P D patients need as much oxygen as necessary to get them to a saturation of at least ninety.
You can do that to.
Absolutely, especially if they're not stable. You have C O P D patients that come to the emergency room, and they're having, um, shortness of breath or exacerbation, you want to provide F I O two, and you want a high-flow device, because. Let, let's step up. To be a candidate for low-flow device, you need to have a respiratory rate that is less than twenty-five breaths per minute. Also, you need to have a tidal volume that is within, um, five hundred, seven hundred liters. And then you need to have a breathing pattern. That is normal. That's a candidate for low-flow device. Okay, what does that tell you? It's stable, okay? Is that what that means? If my breathing pattern is normal, my tidal volume is normal, and my rate is normal, too. I'm stable, right? But even on stable, I might be experiencing some hypothermia for some reason, whatever. Maybe I'm having, um, I'm experiencing changes, I'm in an exacerbation, I'm under deep呼吸. Or I forgot to take my medication, or I was out exercising, whatever the reason is. But it just isn't that bad yet, right? If you know one, you know the other. Because the respiratory rate is very low. So to be a candidate for a high-flow device, it's just opposite of that, right? So now you have to have a respiratory rate that is greater than. Twenty-five, right? A tidal volume, um, outside of. And a breathing pattern. That is not normal. Right? So those are your, those are your indications for high and low-flow device.
How would you figure out the V T though? Would you do it, just figure it out, or are you?
What's my high volume? Does it matter?
Exactly, I'm gonna think of the number you have there.
No, that's true, right? Yeah, right? Don't get so caught up on trying to calculate stuff.
No, no, I'm not.
No, 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 I'm the same. But let's say you go into the patient's room, and you go and walk through the supply of gas. Doesn't seem to be really rising as, like you really should, right? Is it safe to assume that their tidal volume is probably less than what their usual, absolutely. Especially in the test question when it says. Bilateral decrease test experience. Yeah, it's safe to assume that tidal volume is probably not what it's supposed to be. Now, how do you calculate tidal volume? Well, you can do, um.
No, I was just asking, like, would you guys do that, like, would obviously you're saying five hundred or seven hundred, like, while they're, you know, exacerbating, and you're not going to go and.
Oh, no, no, incredible, no, 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 it's just, it's all about, it's all about just assessing them, and just looking at them.
Exactly.
And if I'm breathing, if I'm, if I'm tucking and tucking, my tidal volume is bigger, than what it's supposed to be, right? That's part of hyperventilation. So no, you don't need to stand there in the R and like calculate. No, it's just about a matter of looking at them. Also, that if you say it has to fall in all three categories, it can just be one or the other. And usually one affects the other, almost always goes hand in hand. Because remember, your overall goal is always minute ventilation. Okay? Remember, what's normal minute ventilation? Okay, how do you calculate minute ventilation?
Three times about.
That's minute ventilation, right?
Six liters.
Six liters. How do you know? Because the average volume is what? And the average rate is what? Right? Six liters per minute. Does that mean I'm twelve? I mean, I'm six, no. Does that mean he's six, no? I might be seven. But that's who, that might be, that's might be my normal, right? These are just guidelines for you to go by. Okay, so here's my whole point. If my respiratory rate decreases, what happens to your volume? What does your body do to automatically compensate?
Your tidal volume's going to increase.
It increases, yeah. Remember, your body is a organ that is always constantly trying to fix the problem. So if I, if I am normally breathing twelve, and something happens to me, and I start breathing three, what if my volume is? My body forces me to take bigger breaths. So then you get that. Those long gassy breaths. Why? Because that bigger tidal volume is compensating for that decreased respiratory rate, because your body's goal is to always maintain that minute ventilation. And then just the opposite. If my volume gets really small, what if people start doing this? They breathe really fast. There you go, that?
You got it.
Okay. Alright, um. Your target for any exam is always a, um. Ninety, um, percent sat. And if I'm at a ninety percent saturation, what is my possible P A O two? Go back to your disassociating, because I'm sixty. Right?
Probably thirty, thirty, no, it's, well, that's like a rule of thumb. Oh, really? That's like a rule of thumb, in terms of, what's your CO two, if you get the precipitation.
Yeah. So, each time you're at about a P A O two or sixty, you're about saturated, you're about ninety. So it's, um, four, five, six, seven, nine, or ten, right? Good to you guys, though.
Thank you.
Four, five, six, seventy-one. If I'm at a P A O two forty, I'm at a saturation of seventy, at fifty, eighty, sixty. Four, five, six, seventy-one.
Oh, so thirty, I do the thing, thirty, thirty percent. Paul, you're trying, you go, well, what if their CO two is at eighty, I mean, you're. I told you, real soon, thirty.
So according to your disassociating curve, remember, when you are at a certain P A O two, you need to be at a certain saturation. So the one that you always should remember is the ninety-sixty. So, because that is what is considered, um, your first goal for any critically opated. Any critically opated. I don't care if it's C O P D, C H F, asthmatic, that's always your first goal, is to get them to at least ninety saturation. That's your first goal, at least. Now, for a C O P D or a, now for everybody else except for C O P D'ers, then once you get there, then your target needs to be like ninety-two. Some books even say ninety-four, you just slowly work your way up. C O P D'ers, it just really depends on kind of what their baseline is. Most C O P D'ers run anywhere from an eighty-eight percent saturation to ninety-two. So they're anywhere from a P A O two of about fifty-five to about sixty-five. That's what they're laying. So to answer your question, which is, it took us so long to get to, first, it depends on what's going on with the C O P D'ers. So, you can always give your C O P D patient as much oxygen as necessary to get them to their baseline saturation. Okay? That's like the safest answer. So, what does that look like? Well, if you have a C O P D patient that comes to the emergency room, they're having difficulty breathing, you don't even know what the rate is, you don't need to know what the breathing pattern is, they're having difficulty breathing, right? So they are not stable, so they qualify for a high-flow device, right? So which one is best? Well, that doesn't mean dump the gun, because Miss McHale said, no, don't grab the non-breather. The reason why you want to get a Venturi is because the Venturi is the one that can give you the lowest amount of F I O two and meet their respiratory demand, because they're in trouble. Right? So you can start off at twenty-four, then do a sat, right? You have to max them about two hours, when you check them, and see where they are, right? Now, but if they're stable, let's say they just come in and, and it's kind of having a hard time, but your respiratory rate is twenty-two, oh, they're so kind, they're so low-flow, so go ahead and give them a, um, a major cannula. At two liters, twenty-four percent. You always want to start low with them, because your biggest fear, you don't want to knock out your hypoxic drive. So you start low and work your way up. If they're stable, Venturi. If they're not stable, um, I'm sorry, stable, I'm tired. Stable, major cannula, not stable, they're starting Venturi. So does that mean you can put a C O P D patient on a hundred percent? Absolutely. If your C O P D'er comes in there at seventy-two percent, you better. There's no time to work out that twenty-four, and let's see how they do. Right? Depends on the case, depending what's going on with the patient at that moment. But if they're at eighty-eight saturation, you don't know. Start with, you know, and they're stable, start with a major cannula. Or eighty-eight percent saturation and not stable, go ahead and do the Venturi. You don't need a whole lot of F I O two, you only need to get two percent to ninety, because that's your first goal, right? All that makes sense. So, one of the indications for humidity is to add moisture to a dry gas, because oxygen is very dry. So, some of the hazards of oxygen, of course, is, you know, um, ex-epa-epitaxis, right? You don't need, you may not learn that sort of a lot, because the nerves are dry, um, or, um, they complain of, um, lung disease, they complain of rhinus. Or they'll even, um, complain of, um, they feel like they're co-deptic, just because their, their passage is blocked in this gas. So we can add moisture. So, this is their humidifier, it's a bubble humidifier, you know how it works? Bubble, so how does it work? You attach it to the foam meter, and then what? What happens? And gases do what? These are these words that I need for you guys to grab onto. This is called.
The variable.
A straw.
The straw.
Passes through the straw. Yes, that's it. It creates bubble, and it picks up humidity, and it's delivered to the patient. It's a very simple device. Alright, so you connect it to the foam meter, right? Now, this bubble humidifier is used for what type of devices?
Low-flow.
Nope, because a low-flow can also be a Venturi, well, not, um, a non-breather. Your N B R Cs and.
Yeah, thank you.
You can use a bubble humidifier for any oral nasal device. That's your technical definition. Now, the test is, is that at anything greater than about ten liters per minute, it's not going to be effective. It's not going to give you, uh, the humidity that you need. So it's not going to work well with a non-breather. It's not going to work well with a simple mask. You could, if you're running a simple mask at five liters, but once you start upping that liter flow, you've got to be careful, because it's not going to give you the humidity that you need. Okay? So, it is the most ideal humidifier for a major cannula. So that's where your answer comes in. You need to know all that other stuff, because if they, if they start asking you all these other questions, you're like, well, I don't know, I just go major cannula. But it's because at high flows, you're not going to be, it's not going to give you the right amount of humidity. And also, it's going to, um, you know, it's, it's not going to pop off, because this doesn't have a pop-off valve. Most humidifiers come with a pop-off valve. So, pop-off meaning, uh, it's, um, a safety device, and it's a little like pop-up valve. And when the pressure inside gets greater than two P S I, it actually pops up to release the pressure. Can you connect it? Um, I'm going to turn the compressor on on the side. Go on, I'll connect it. And then, so what are we running our simple mask at? What did we say? Now, he's running it on air, which is not going to give our patient anything. But twenty-one percent.
You're calling it on.
So turn it up to five, right? Okay, that's the minimum flow rate, right? Alright, so see how it's bubbling? Now turn it up. Look at the bottle, real carefully. Watch it expand. You see it expanding?
Yeah.
Too much pressure. There's no pop-off valve on there. So if you turn that flow up high enough, it's going to do what? You hear it? You hear it?
Yeah.
It's going to blow. And you're going to have water everywhere. No, there's no pop-off valve on those. Really, I've never heard that. But seriously, so if you're in the hospital and you start turning it up, it's going to actually explode on you, you're going to be like soaked, and it's not going to get all over the patient. Textbooks say ten, I say don't run anything over six. Five to six maximum.
So N B R C, yeah.
No, textbook will teach you that anything over ten is not going to give you the humidity that's desired. But, um, clinical, I wouldn't run anything past six. N B R C, you're just going to be concerned. They don't actually ask you, like, specifically with your flow, they'll give you, like, a scenario, like, you, you're inspecting the O two delivery device, and you notice the bubble humidifier, um, has expanded, um, what could be the possible pop, or how do you fix it, and one of your amp would be decreasing flow. So they don't give you, like, um, a specific on that, as far as board is concerned. The clinical, five to six, textbook, anything greater than ten, it's not going to give you the humidity that you just offered. Alright, so, no, there's no pop-off valve on this brand of bubble humidifier. But most bubble humidifiers, or even, um, other types of humidifiers, come off, come with a pop-off valve. Okay? Pop-off valve is to release pressure, so one of them. Okay, so what is this?
Well, it's a bubble humidifier.
No. And what's its technical term? You said, well, delivered aerosol, but what is it? Delivered cool aerosol, but what is it? It's, uh, what kind of nebulator?
Uh, cooler. Cooler.
This stabilizer delivers cool aerosol, what kind of nebulator is it? It's a large, long nebulator.
L V N.
L V N? LBN? This is a large volume nebulizer. I mean, if you wanna be like. Alright, let's see, let's see just these little things that will throw you. This is what?
Water.
Water, that's it. This is the nebulizer. Cause your nebulizer is in here, right? So when you attach it and you make it, that's what it creates, makes it become the large volume nebulizer, right? And it still works on the same principle, gas goes through there, goes down through the straw, it picks, makes the bubbles, picks up the humidity, delivers it to the patient. Now, is there a difference between these? It's the size, they're both large volume nebulizers. How do you know what's gonna use? Well, if you have a fake patient that requires twenty-four hour humidity, this would be better. Why? Because it's more of it. If you gave this to someone who required twenty-four hour cool aerosol, you're only hanging there four hours. It's gonna run too fast, it's gonna run out sometimes, so use a bigger one. Now, infectious control, in the, in the R C question. What is the most important thing that you need to do when you are using a large volume nebulizer? Even before that, what's something that you should put on your notes?
All the time and date when.
Date, time, because you have how many hours to use it? Twenty-four. So we go for twenty-four hours. So you have to ti- you have to put the date you opened it and the time and the interval. Because, no. Those run pretty fast, those run out pretty fast. Actually, yes, for NBLC purposes, yes, changing things out. Because if you just leave it stagnant, what's the most common contaminant of respiratory therapy equipment? What myphovaxia is the most common contaminant of? Sutamol's like water. And where is sutamol from? In YouTube, right? You need to sit in there, spend three days, right? Spend a little bit of time in shape in here, so sutamol's all up in your, right? You have to hear a patient, maybe it's in your sutamol. You look at my brain and I got sutamol on my hand. You don't go wild, you drop your nose, breathe, and then you got sutamol in. There's patients, less patients there and you got, they got sutamol. You wonder why I always, I ask you to remember. Alright. Large volume nebulizers will only connect to large bore tubing. Bubble humidifiers will only connect to small bore tubing. Alright, so cool aerosol can be connected to, really a large bore tubing is fifteen millimeters in, in the gaffer. So you can connect it to a fake collar. You can connect it to an aerosol mask. You can connect it to a fake shield, only use a fake one. Fake fingers, right? You can't touch the face, right? And you just pop it forward, this is the reason. And then you can access, you can also connect to aerosol, you can access. You can access to E T two, you have to have a D R. You can take it down? Swing with it? Now, when do we use? When do we use? When do we use this? So what's the purpose of, what's the purpose of a center? This is the last step before exhumation. Alright, so now you pull the tube. And the patient has marked strider. What do you do? No, mark, mark means what? What's those two words? Mark was severe, re-infect. They don't say that, they just show signs of dyspnea or mild strider. Let's see, we got the employee up there. Severe, re-infect. Severe, we don't have time for that, severe means, if they have severe strider, what's strider? What's, uh, talking about your therapist? Well, like, poggies. Very good. Have a team, right? A guinea of upper airway. It's either supravotic or subotic. So if we just post-exuminate it, is it supravotic or subotic? Subotic. Because the tough is where, below the blood, right? So it's subotic. What's going on? Because the tough pressure, right? At what pressure are you applying the static flow? That's arterial pressure. Above twenty, twenty-five. So what pressure is when static flow, I'll clue it. About five. About five, that's it. So if we already have to inflate it to about eighteen to twenty, and we are putting static flow at just five, aren't we not slowing no matter what? So that's why we put them on aerosol as soon as they have it. Got it? You got that? Yes.
Yeah, that at the hospital, they put, you know, the exhumation, they put them on and heated it.
Nope, and why do you not want to do the heat it?
Well, because heated before you help with the tissue.
Don't make it rocket science, who sprained your ankle? Who has to learn it? Who is known to hurt your ankle? Who took this down and bump, uh, who had any part of their body swell? And what is the doctor telling you? Ice, right? Cause ice reduces swelling. Cold, it's the cold that reduces swelling, cool aerosol reduces swelling, that's it. Not heat. Heat will increase blood flow, but we don't want that, we wanna decrease swelling, right?
You can use cool aerosol before exhumation.
Yep. And why are we doing it before? Get them to vent, or a week. You wing them, you got them down to CPAP. Doctor's doing T B shot. So this is your T B shot, T B shot is cool aerosol at forty percent. You put them on forty percent, T B shot. So she needs to want forty percent. Doesn't matter, look at this nerve factor, this nerve factor should have been at ten, right? How is, look at the nerve factor? Alright. He's on CPAP, he's just on the vent, doctor does T B shot, he's on T B shot. What's the purpose of putting them in cool aerosol before we pull the tube? If all I just told you that when we take out the tube, it can out some swelling, we need cool aerosol to decrease the swelling, what's the purpose of providing cool aerosol before we pull the tube? What's in him? What's half, what, what's still in? And what do you need to do and what, what have you done? Yeah, he's intubated, so what happens when we intubate patient? If he's still intubated, what happened to the function of his nose? Not dependent, what do we do? We created what? We created a humidity deficit, right? Right? What, go back to your indication, what's the indication for cool aerosol? Provide, provide humidity. When do you provide humidity? When the upper airway is bypassed, by what? An E T tube, because when we bypass E T tube, we do what? The nose is primat- what's its function? To filter, warm, moisturize, right? Can't do that because it's the E T tube in. So everything he's breathing in is no longer humidified, warm or filtered. So give him some water, right? That's all humidity is, is water, me too. So we provided before because we needed to give him some humidity. We provided after to decrease the swelling. Then he says. The air compressor, it's used to run your small volume nebulizer. Is the air compressor gonna be the same medical air that's in the hospital, coming out of your yellow formula?
No.
Why is it?
No, cause it's just entraining the air that's around.
It's still entraining. Medical air is medical grade, medical grade air. So yeah, it took this air, but it focused it, threw it from all, um, dust particles or oil, it's, it's what you're about. All this dirty stuff you're breathing, that's. Now, on this one, you try to make you out of water, like you need a more open. But patients at home don't have pipe to medical air, right? So they might just try to help, but. So if they have to dare, they can take their treatment. It's equivalent to about sixteen per minute when you're running it at the hospital. It's gonna take about fifteen minutes to get the vibe, um, of breathing. Alright, um, what is this? What's wrong, certain about the bathroom? Actually, please. I feel there's questions about the bathroom, I've been asleep, right? Because it's not, it's not in your collection, collection. What's on your phone? If you run your S V N or if you're in the hospital? The one is over time.
He's getting看不见.
In clinical, yes, but at the hospital, I mean, at, you know, C hospital, we do a little bit of optimal, my life. And what's the, the optimal breathing pattern of a patient to use in the hospital? Is that? I don't know. How long? Five.
Five seconds?
Five to ten seconds. Why is that important? How, and how is that important?
Hold it down there, that's a pedal.
Settling mandation.
For better definition, right? Give you breath, hold it, you allow the particles to fall, 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 deeper, deeper. Better definition. Now. What happens if the patient starts complaining of tingling in their scrum dials and white edema happening?
High school graduation.
You're saying it right, you're not wrong. You're not wrong at all.
Hyper, hyper.
Hyper, in my. Hyper, right? If I hold my breath too long, or if I continue to take those deep breaths. Right, cause that's how you work in the breathe, that's what you're gonna do for fifteen minutes? Yeah, I'm gonna pass out at some point. So what happens when you start complaining when you start breathing?
Go down.
You go on the breath, you go back, right?
Go deep breath, hold for five different things.
What's that, what is that called? When you have to take that, inhalation, deep breath, hold it, you know, so what is that called?
It's a ragamun.
People think that he has, that's, that's my. It's slow, maximal, like, like. It is the same breath maneuver you use for I S, for S V N, for N B I, for D P I. Almost anything you do in your, S M I, slow, maximal, and.
What is this for? S M I?
It's for life.
It's the breathing maneuver you do almost with any respiratory treatment. Um, N B I, D P I, S V N, it's what helps you, um, have the better definition. What's in this? This one? What is this called? Well, I think it's something. Now you can switch the part, one makes you continuously nebulize, the other one makes you not. So when it's not, what is that called? Cause that's what this is called. It's called the airway clip, that's the brand.
It's a partial nebulizing.
It's called the breath actuated. So it's only going to nebulize when they take a breath. Everybody will have them, I don't know. Breath actuated nebulizer. So it's only going to nebulize when the patient takes a breath. So actuate meaning to start or initiate. So only when the patient takes the breath, it's gonna nebulize.
Why they name that?
So, so what's the benefit? This one can, this one is continuous. This one will only nebulize when the patient takes a breath. So even though it's more expensive, it is, the patient's gonna get, um. So even though it's more expensive, it is the patient's gonna get um more bang than a breath actually. Giving more medication. That is what they, that is what they tell you. Um, because they are giving more medication when they actually breathe it in. Um, studies show that the patient is giving the equivalent in five minutes to what they would be doing here in fifteen. But you should have the patient do the whole thing. That's the whole purpose of it. It wasn't designed to cut down on therapist workflow time. It was designed to make sure that the patient gets the maximal effect of the medication. So unfortunately, you now have hospitals buying this very, very expensive. Um, small volume nebulizer. And because literature shows if you can complete the treatment in five minutes, you thought therapists go, oh, five minutes, done, I gotta go get breakfast. No, that's not.
Uh, masturbatious.
Yeah, you're wrong. I'll even give you an example, personal, this is a personal, I was at the hospital and uh, so we got asked to happen. And he's like. First year, just like. Give this to me, because I found it, and you're done, and I was the purpose, so I passed for it, and I'm like, no. He's like, oh, yeah, 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 no, it's okay. He said, I never told him on the therapist. So by the time I got to the floor, like the next day, um, you know, my family members decided, yeah, I'm actually doing this. So I could see the therapist, then it was, would you like to take the whole treatment? Or would you like to just run it for five minutes? Oh, so you can run it longer than five, I got smile, it's fine. Oh, absolutely, absolutely, but some patients don't like to do it for five minutes, they always go, you want to do five minutes? So it goes back to.
Did you talk to the doctor?
Uh, no, then he's like, oh, well, whatever you want to do, whatever you want to do, and I was like, that's fine, that's fine. Then they write little notes and send you a chart to the therapist. So. It was created for the patient to get the maximum benefit of the medication, not to, not to complete the treatment. It wasn't created for um to to be more time efficient. Yeah, and then and then that just gives the purpose, cause that's why it's created. So when would you decide to run it continuously? Well, when you have a patient that's like really established that's not a good, and they're having a hard time, go ahead and run, you can run it continuously. Cause that's the place, why is it charging twenty dollars? Cause that's the place, do you think that? That's who I pay for, it's my insurance, right? So if you're not gonna use it for its original in intensity, why is it charging me? And there you go. And that's why you need to be the educated therapist. Because, yeah, what about the eighty seven year old grandmother who's on Medicare? And doesn't have a lot of money, or she's gonna get this high ass hospital bill when she gets home? When we could've saved maybe a couple of pennies here and there, right? Hey doctors, what kind of running continues, can we go ahead and just give her a regular S V N? You don't get in trouble for that. You don't even get in trouble if you just say, forget the doctor, let me just go grab a regular S V N and give it to her. Aren't you doing the same thing? Don't they do the same thing? Absolutely.
Um, disposable. But actuated.
Now.
Use the breath actually like one. Breath actually, you gotta tell the patient like every, if you're breathing, if you're breathing.
I have to turn on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one solid, one of the broken up, treat the broken up one, you can actually solve.
The one that's continuous, one that's.
But you know, you guys, you kind of just take that with you, and that's just, that's. Being an advocate for the patient.
Yeah, it's continuous, yeah? This is.
You are an advocate for the patient, for example, blood gas. Most hospitals charge one five four blood gas, right? But blood gas machines actually come in two parts. They actually come in a blood gas analyzer, which is gonna give you the C H, the C O two, and the O two, and it probably needs to bypass. And then you have a COX. That COX almost always is a separate piece of equipment. They put it together so it looks like one big machine. But even your fancier, your more current machines actually have a COX built in there. And you can make it where you don't have a COX reading. Who needs COX? Well, people who are suspected for carbon monoxide poisoning. So if I'm just coming in for an asthma episode, why are you running a COX on me? Why is it charging me two hundred and fifty dollars? Since it only charges seven hundred ninety five dollars for a blood gas and COX. You take the COX off, it's four hundred ninety five dollars. So why, why would we, everybody get the COX? And that's how, so then what happens? That's how influence costs go off, right? Think about it.
It's like, like, has anybody ever said anything, like, I'm sorry, if you bring it up, like, I want to do this, but like.
Well, the great thing is, I actually, unless I've learned to tell my brother patient that, is I actually had a boss who said. It makes no sense to charge this much for patients who don't need COX. So for um three months, we tracked who needed COX and who didn't. And then they actually came up, came up with a protocol on who would get COX and who wouldn't, to help cut costs for the patient. But it would take, it would take a supervisor life staff to try and get some things paid. Other than that, think about how many people have been charged that astronomical cost.
People who are not as old and oblivious.
But the advocate isn't gonna be. And if they're sick, you're coming to the hospital because I need to get better. I just wanna get better right now. I'm not thinking about, oh, she accidentally dropped that syringe, and now you're gonna charge me another dollar to buy all these instruments? Yeah, they do. You get bills for all of that. Those patient bags, you know, you gotta go to the hospital, and you have the patient bag, you put the nebulizer in, it's a function. Well, hell, if you change it every day, that's a lot, after a while, that's a lot of money, right?
It's also like, it's it's important to change it, like uh. Uh, last time, cause I like every two days, every odd day or whatever, they would change out all the T V's. And then nine catheters and all that.
Yeah, you could follow the protocol.
So for a patient that's known something. Probably not too many patients are gonna be saying that.
Not too many.
There are two.
And after two days, I really do want to change it. But some stuff is unnecessary, you know, um. Like I work at a facility, if you miss something like that, you miss, you the therapist miss. If the patient didn't do anything, you miss. And you open up a new kit, you gotta charge the patient for that extra kit, like, are you kidding me? So because you're not competent, I get charged for a whole nother kit? So it's like those little things, so you know. I don't know, sometimes I just take the speaker, put my phone there, and I'm like, you know, I mean. Sometimes, some stuff is a bit. Okay, that's enough on that.
Cool.
Oh, I love it.
Question.
Uh huh.
So, the A B G machine uh analyzed that patient? What is it, hemoglobin?
No, COX.
Of course.
So if you're getting a hemoglobin saturator, you're just gonna have a COX.
So I mean, this. Do you need a COX for that?
No.
So the COX, do you need a hemoglobin, that's it, what else do you give the other?
It gives you um carbation hemoglobin, methemoglobin, it gives you everything that hemoglobin and carbation combined with. That's what the COX is. But like, let's say you had a patient who's bleeding out, they have uh D I bleed. I don't need, and let's say they're having difficulty breathing, so the doctor orders blood gas. I don't have to have a COX. If they have labs done on your T V C, the hemoglobin's gonna be on there. So, no, I don't need to do it, why? It's only one of my thoughts. Let's look at this little thing, you know, but it really.
Most people don't keep.
I mean, me, when I get a thirty three thousand dollar bill, because I've been in the hospital for a year, I'm like going through, you know. So then the next time I just say, yeah, no, don't, don't do that.
Often analyze, if it does analyze, it's a good.
What I see, I know.
That was a question we asked today.
What question did you ask me?
Like, what equipment uh analyzed that patient's condition?
There was a COX, or was it often?
I think it was. It was, it was the.
For what?
No, although it was a pulse, it was a panel song.
Well, A B G would be right, is that?
It was a pulse shock, it was a pulse shock, often analyzer, and A B G analyzer.
It was a, it was an A B G with an A B G analyzer, um.
I have those questions, I I can't.
No, we had um.
What do you think more do you use to analyze?
You have a um. A hemio- oxygen meter? What are you asking?
No, Andrew was there, she asked questions.
Hey, you weren't here doing it.
I'd have to see the question, to answer the question. What do you use to analyze hemoglobin in a disease?
But a COX wasn't on there.
I'd have to see what the answer is for, cause they do call them different things, and one of the other terms is a hemio-oximeter. Is that a neonatal question? I have to see the question.
Maybe tomorrow.
I just, I would have to see the question.
We have pulse shock.
Pulse shock does not measure hemoglobin.
Yeah. Then there was an oxygen analyzer and the A B G analyzer.
A B G would have a analyzer.
Maybe the A B G was.
Would be an A B G, it would be your best answer, right, A B G. And that would be your best answer, but if they ever give you A B G and a COX, it's COX. That's gonna be, that's your next best answer.
Did you guys write down the questions for the Q V? Yeah, of course.
Okay. So this is. Tell me how you answer.
S M I. If you warm it up, you love it, you, you warm it, remember the song? Remember the song?
So we remembered. We all remember pieces of it, alright, so what's the first thing you use? Then we shake it, right? Why don't we shake it?
So, so there's more sediment.
What?
Like more of the medicine.
But there's two words, I'm trying to get you guys to hold on to these words. Using the words that slam you on your test. You mentioned the medication and the. Propellant, right? You mentioned the medication, the propellant. Cause the propellant is what makes it go into an aerosol form, right? There's something in here. And if you listen more carefully, you can't stop, that's what propellant. Right? I told you guys warm it, do you guys know how to warm it? You know how to warm it? Warm it. Hold you up tonight. Right? Because.
I see a hospital, they're, they're, they're warming it.
There's nothing in here. Right? So pay to. I don't know, I can't breathe. Oh, that's no better. No, you don't, there's nothing in here. That's all propellant that just came out, right? The good thing about this one, it has a counter, so they warm it. But what about inhalers that don't have a counter? And then the patient's like, I just don't seem to be getting better, but I'm taking my inhaler, a lot of times it's just empty. There's no propellant, there's no medication left.
That was fair, but also I've never seen them warming the shaker, do they?
Yeah, and because why? Cause either they probably don't know, right? And then that is you as the good respiratory therapist, and as the advocate, to step in and say, I need to do some patient retraining.
At the hospital, like, the only one we do is in line, I'm like, oh.
Okay, but what?
Yeah, that's one way.
Intubated patient, and and that's fine. But what happens if you happen to work at a facility where there's a. You know, so this is why you wanna know how to do it. Also, you wanna know how to do this because. On board, you are gonna do it. And they are gonna give you questions, like, when do you actuate? Right? Immediately after they start taking these breaths in, right? And what is the maneuver that they do?
S M I.
An S M I, right? That's why it's important to hold your breath. For better definition, right? How do you know which one to get? Well, cause you know pharmacology.
Right, they're saying, they just go like, instead of you know, like every, you're waiting for the, for the inhale, they just go. One, two, three, four, five, six, I was like, wow.
Yeah, and so then you need to like, you know what?
Not a certain facility, I understand.
And so.
No, I know, I know, I am saying same, but.
But then I would want you to be my, my therapist. No, no, I'm not serious, it can't be, I work here and it's uh, so I'm not, no.
No, 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 I mean, I'm a student, I'm a student.
Even as a student, if you approach it right, you can get to a point of, you as a student are smarter than anybody in there. Wanna know why? Here in your book. Here in your book. You should be able to run circles around those therapists. The only thing they have on you is more experience in doing it. But I guarantee, if you go and say, what's the hardest thing I have to ask for you, they don't know. But you do. Why do you? Because you're studying. If people are asking, why do you mix the propellant? How much percentage? Eighty percent, you know, they don't know, you wanna know why? They forgot. Cause they learned it to take boards. So yeah, as a student, get comfortable. Because this gets to dictate what kind of therapist you're gonna be. Cause if you, I ain't gonna say anything, cause I'm just a student, well, hell, when you're a therapist, you ain't gonna say anything then, because now. These people think you really do know what you're talking about. And I'm not jumping on you or anything like that.
They don't say nothing, how are you gonna be involved?
Well, not only that, but remember, we encourage you, now, I don't know what happened in your last class. But my students, they gotta get the business contact. We're there, go talk to that doctor right now, say hi. Oh, maybe I do, yeah, I'm gonna sell you for today. Cause I need for them to get comfortable talking to these godlike people.
And you have to do that.
Right? Because you need to be able to say, excuse me, I know I'm just a student. But in class, we were learning how to do N B I, and I was watching you, and I was just wondering if if you wouldn't mind, maybe I could talk to the patient for a little bit? If they say, F you and get out of here. You're, it's not gonna fly, so let's just leave you. Because you are only doing what's right for the patient. Right? Because that patient's gonna leave here and go home and. Doesn't work, doesn't work like that, right?
Okay, the fact of the fact, you said warm it, shake it.
Warm it, mix the propellant with the medication. Um, you tell the patient to take a deep breath in, and as soon as they start taking that deep breath in, they need to actuate now. So then. You should have the patient place it right inside their mouth. The problem is the plum, you know, you, you know, like a plum. The plum is that initial burst of medication that comes out of the canister. It was hitting the back of the throat. So majority of the medication would be rained out, just into the oral fairness area. So they're hard to get in enough medication. So they do some research, and they say, well, if you do two fingers and you press them here. Not all of it's gonna hit the back of the throat, and if they inhale to the stomach, it's going to, you're gonna have more medication go down into the lung.
So you just like right there?
Yeah, so you wanna teach them, you say two fingers, they're gonna teach them to place it um away from their mouth. And so they're in there like, and press.
You don't want it in your mouth, you just want it to go away.
Because having it just outside of your mouth helps from all of it not being into the back of the throat. Once more medication gets down into the lungs. Now. Um. They can do it. Spencer is really good for really little people, well, like five and under. I didn't mean say really little. Five and under, and for elderly. Or anyone who has a hand breath coordination problem. They can't get the hand breath thing together, right? They press it too fast, or they don't inhale at the right time, they can use spacer.
No, my son's kind of, he's kind of young, I think, you know, always like teenage kids. My son's football, he, they don't know how to inhale.
Now, we do have some.
He put it right over the mouth.
We do have some pheasistic ones, and they cover the mask, so you can hold the mask onto the baby's face, you know, warm it, shake it, and press it in here, and then we, um, actuate it, and pull it over, and then just have the baby inhale. Um, so we can do it like that, too. So if the pheasistic ones do have masks on, they look similar to the T B R. Um. The good thing about the finger is it holds it in here. And it holds it in here, so if they don't inhale wide away, it's a face, it's a medical thing. That doesn't mean they can press it, and, you know, go talk in the phone, and come back, it's already, it's, it's. Um, this one has a one-way valve, so it does stick. You have to make sure you are careful, this one's just holding the finger. This is going to be like tomato, tomato. Some of them that are cartonists don't have a one-way valve. Um, some of them are spaces, ha- don't have a one-way valve, so don't get caught by that. The one-way valve is what holds it in here. The ones without the one-way valve, they need to be, because inhale immediately. Because without that one-way valve locking it in here, it's going to, it's going to lead into the atmosphere quickly.
Well, it's not, they could just keep their mouth on it, they could breathe.
Now. And so I would say that, now, how many times are you supposed to breathe in and out?
Now, it's.
Let's clear the chamber, so they're going to leave it in their mouth, hold it, that's it. Inhale again, hold it, five seconds, that's it, then we do that three to five times, so make sure they get all the medication that's in there. Right? That's when you do it. Same thing, just have the baby breathe, three to five times, but keep it in there, yeah, keep the mask on the face. All right. Now. NBI. It's an aerosol. When it, um, bronchodilators, fast acting bronchodilators, steroids coming in DI form, and we need it built in there. When using a steroid, whether it's DPI or NBI, always make sure the patient rinses their mouth or boggles, to prevent what?
Brush.
Off and on.
Oroprengial candidacy.
Cheers. Has seen it in, in its, in its role made.
Longage. Oroprengial candidacy.
Yeah. Or al- allican.
Candidacy.
Yeah. Why?
Candy?
All right.
Yeah.
DPIs. DPIs come in combination health, like a steroid and long acting bronchodilator, or, um, usually a long, or a long acting bronchodilator, or a steroid. DPIs are not made for, um, rescue bronchodilators, like the basic analysis, like W R. You're not going to find a DPI of W R. Um, DPIs are for maintenance. The most important thing about DPIs is it is really not indicated for five and under, and elderly. Because the patient has to be able to generate, um, sixty liters per minute on the intravenous base. You have to be able to generate sixty liters per minute, um, because if you don't, it's not going to create the aerosol. Yeah, it's dry powder. Have you ever seen bronchitis, a little dish, and, right, you, it's going to fall?
No.
Well, that's what it was by the. There's like a little dish.
You have one of those.
And a little powder, powder. And so, every time they open it, it turns it, and then they click down, and that pumps through the portal.